Hello, welcome to City Council Spotlight with Councillor-at-Large Will Mbah. Hi, Will.
Hi, Sarah. How you doing today?
I'm fine. I'm Sarah Fishman. And how's it going over there? You're almost like in Dilboy.
Me?
Yeah, if you're at home, right?
Yeah, I'm at home. When you said Dilboy, I wasn't sure.
You're way at that end of things.
That's right.
Anyhow, can we start with just some quick biographical information? How long have you been on the council?
First, thank you for having me, Sarah, once again. So I've been on the council for two years and I'm in my second term. So I was elected in the fall of 2017.
Okay, and you are Chair of a committee that has a lot of things on it. Is it equity, gender, families, and vulnerable populations? That's a lot of very, you know, that's a lot of people to take care of. Is that what it's called? Something like that, right?
Yes, it is, you know, and it's the newly created committee, so.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of it.
Yeah, they just created this year and we've just been, you know, since most of the, when the pandemic hit, you know, we just realized that most of those equity issues, we can discuss that during the COVID update, you know, since we were having those meetings almost every week.
Okay, that's good. So how long have you lived in Somerville, the other?
Roughly almost 10 years because I moved, I moved to Somerville in the spring of 2011.
And how are you and your wife coping with two very young children in your home during these COVID times? Is, am I allowed to say their names?
So I have two kids.
Yeah.
Grace is two years old and Joel is four years old.
I remember when he was born and I have a picture of him as a little, little thing. Gee.
Not little anymore though. That guy's tough now.
I should not comment on that one way or the other, but how, how have you guys been coping? I mean, just, just so people know, I mean, how has it been for you?
Sarah, I have to tell you that, you know, yeah, you know, it's been very challenging, you know, like having a four-year-old, you know, at home, you know, like getting him to focus on Zoom because he's in the SMY program in the public school. So even just to, you know, have him sit still, you know, it's tough, so.
It's hard for an adult to do it. It's hard for an adult.
Yep, and then, and then we have, we are both, you know, like working parents, you know, and then yet we have to, you know, like, I just also, you know, like supervise him remotely and, yeah, it's, so I'm really hoping that, you know, we can all, you know, get all our kids back to school in Somerville soon, you know, especially the younger ones, as the data suggests that, you know, they can be done safely without serious spreading of COVID.
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot of people think for the younger children it's especially important.
Yes.
So I want to talk a little bit about the eviction ban. There was a statewide ban saying people could not be evicted during the COVID emergency. And that ban just ended a few days ago, right?
Yes.
But the city has its own ban. Can you explain what the protections are, what that could do for people?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, so Sarah, you know, our city eviction ban is true to the duration of the state of emergency. You know, so you probably are aware of that. And so the eviction moratorium applies to both residential and commercial properties. You know, prohibits the physical act of eviction, you know, within our city. So, I mean, this is, that's like the baseline of what eviction, you know, like protects. But, you know, we also have to understand that evictions, you know, like are state matters, you know, and also state laws. So, you know, if anybody has or is experiencing any eviction proceedings, they should immediately, you know, like call the Office of Housing Stability or call 311, you know, and they will connect them to the Office of Housing Stability or the Economic Department Division. So they will work with landlords and the Somerville Police Department as necessary to intervene.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad you said that because I was going to make sure the phone number or something got out there, so that's, that's good that you can do it.
Yeah, and also, just to also like, you know, reiterate that, you know, we, we also have like rent assistance programs, you know, like through the Office of Housing Stability for people struggling to pay rents. So if anybody's watching, there's a lot of resources, you know, like on our website.
That's good. Yeah, that's, that's what we hope that our elected officials will, will do, help people. So have you seen or have constituents been telling you about a lot more situations of being near homeless or about to be in a difficult situation? The term they used when I was in graduate school was precariously housed, you know, kind of just like on the edge of a difficult situation. Have you been hearing a lot of that?
I mean, we've been, Sarah, I don't even know where to start. So it's, these are things that are, you know, like constantly happening. And this, so the Office of Housing Stability, I just don't even have any data right now, but they have been doing like enormous work, like in trying to stabilize people's housing. So this is something that has been happening a lot that, that really makes people really panic because just the fact that the statewide, you know, like ban just ended, it's just, it's, I mean, like, so, yeah, it's, it's been, it's really concerning because we on the city council, you know, with housing advocates and members of our communities are very concerned, you know, so this is, it's not something that, it's a very fluid situation and we need to get the words out so that people know that there's enormous resources that we have, you know. And, and this is all both renters and, you know, homeowners, you know, alike. So this is not just for renters because if you're maybe homeowner or maybe somebody's struggling to pay a mortgage, you know, reach out.
So my understanding is, tell me if I got this right, that people can still go to court, landlords can still go to court to start an eviction case, but under the ban the city has, nobody can be removed, physically removed from their home.
That is 100%, you know, that's why I said that, you know, like I said, evictions are state matters, you know, and, and also state law. So it's, it makes it, you know, like complicated.
You know, but people might not either realize or truly believe or feel they're protected if they get a different sort of message from a landlord or somebody else. So it's important, right, that they know they cannot be physically removed. They also cannot be locked out. They cannot have utilities cut off.
Yep, yep, yep.
So.
No, no, thank you. Our moratorium applies to both residential and commercial properties and it prohibits the physical act of eviction within our city. So it's pretty clear. That is, you know, as simple as it can be. So that's why I say like, if anybody is experiencing any physical eviction, they should immediately, you know, contact 311 and they'll be directed, you know, to the Office of Housing Stability.
So does the fact that the state, that its ban has ended, is that going to have a negative impact somehow on Somerville or, or not?
I mean, indirectly, because this is, it, once, once this, I mean, Sarah, so I can say that, you know, like I said, you know, statewide ban, you know, when you talk, when you think about it ending, you can already see like what will happen. So that's why we on the city council, housing advocate, members of our communities are very concerned about mass eviction now that the state moratorium has expired. Potentially thousands of families will be put out of their homes in the middle of a pandemic, just as winter is certainly in. So this are serious concerns and also it will eventually lead to the rise in cases that, you know, will come from people moving in with family or friends if they are evicted. So it's, you can see that, you know, like interconnection.
It's scary. It's, it's more than a little scary.
And that is why, yes.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Was, so I know that there, that State Representative Connolly and Senator Pat Jalen, they both put forward bills on Beacon Hill about this. Is that going to go anywhere? Is that going to help or not?
Glad that you brought that up because, you know, it's absolutely crucial, you know, for the state legislature to take up the COVID Housing Stability Act because the bill will provide relief for renters and small landlords. That is essential as we continue to deal with this pandemic.
Yeah.
Rep. Connolly, you know, like Rep. Senator Jalen, Rep. Barber, Rep. Provost, all of whom represent our city, you know, have been really pushing for this bill. And I hope that their colleagues understand the urgency of the situation and act accordingly.
Do you think they will?
Governor would, you know, like consider renewing the moratorium in the meantime to provide relief and protect our families and communities.
Do you have any sense of how likely it is to happen?
I don't, I, no, I don't.
It might be a hard question to answer. I just thought I should ask.
Hey, you know, it's as simple as, a simple answer as well. Like, I wish I knew, I knew, Sarah.
Yeah, so what other issues have people been, either constituents or your neighbors or people, what are they talking about the most or concerned about the most beyond what we've just discussed?
This, first, I must also have to say that it's been, you know, like tricky to stay in touch with constituents given the pandemic.
Yeah.
I try to be as available as I can, you know, but I have to tell you, like, the number one thing, you know, that I hear right now is schools, you know. People want their kids to get back to school, you know, especially the kids with special needs. And then people's finances, they also want to know about the coronavirus situation, you know, like just all the different, you know, like components. Like people are worried about, you know, the economic consequences. And I also concern about racial justice and equity issues. So just, you know, like how we can make Somerville work for everybody, Sarah. That is, you know, so everybody, including you, you know, I mean, you've reached out to me multiple times about, you know, how we can make, you know, look after everybody. Because this is like really unprecedented times.
Yeah, yeah, deep breath. You're, you're one of, there's only so much you can do, right?
That is right.
So it's, it's a lot of hard stuff. Okay, so I, well, okay, so let's talk about something different that's equally as difficult perhaps, which is the city has this new independent civilian oversight group that's going to be providing oversight of the police department. And can you just sort of clue us in? This is like just getting started. So can you just give a description of how it's starting? What the process is? How it will work?
Yeah, where should I even start, Sarah? So, you know, we live in, in a very complicated society, you know, and with complex institutions that, you know, were built, you know, with racist policies. And so how do you, you know, work, you know, like to improve, you know, on these policies that make them, you know, like fair and equitable? Because it's pretty complicated if you think that you can dismantle an institution that is society that has those, I mean, it's, it's mind blowing because you even think, talking about an institution that is like, that is a, that was created as a byproduct from slavery, you know, so it's, yeah, so it's, it's complicated. But I would say that, you know, we are making strides and just first of all, before I get into the weeds of what we are doing, you know, I would say that, you know, really, you know, us on the council have taken like great measures to, you know, create a more transparent and a more accountable, you know, policing. So, like right now, I'm even working on, you know, and ordering us to ban, you know, like racial profiling. My colleagues are working on wanting to ban TIGAS, you know, we've banned the use of force and all. So this is like, this is not like a silver bullet. What I'm trying to say is like, this is like another tool in the toolbox to optimize, you know, like how we can be better as a society. So this, you know, like independent or civilian oversight board, you know, they will have the ability to investigate and, and discipline. So they'll be reporting directly to the city council, so you can, and we've already posted, you know, two job positions related to this oversight policing. So one is the outreach coordinator and then one is the legislative analyst. So the legislative, the legislative analyst will do like policy research, draft of municipal legislative language related to police civilian oversight for our city. And they will conduct extensive policy and legal research of existing police civilian oversight the country. So, you know, when we want to do stuff, we want to do it, you know, like best in the state, we also want to do in a way that other communities or other state can actually, you know, like want to set an example for the nation. So that is one piece. And then now the, the outreach coordinator will aid in public outreach to facilitate community meetings related to crafting new policies for civilian oversight around, just around the policing issue. The employee will work with the city council with also local leaders of nonprofit agency, members of the Somerville community, representative from the various departments.
So how many, how many people are on, will be on the group? How many individuals?
I think we are working through that now because we already have like a bunch of resumes. So, so myself, Councillor Scott, Councillor Davis, and Councillor UN Campet. So we were supposed to even meet just now that I'm having this, this interview. So we, so we just pushed a meeting. We'll probably be meeting maybe Friday or this weekend. So we will, so this is a lot, we haven't really, we'll be determining this as we go because you don't, you don't want to rush, but at the same time, you want to be as effective and then as inclusive as possible.
Right.
You know, you cannot, yes, please.
So it's, this is unusual, isn't it, that the, the council gets money to do its own hiring?
Yes, yes.
That, you have, I think you guys are getting $250,000, right?
Yes.
That, does that suggest that this group will have more impact possibly?
It's, you know, it's, that's why I said, we have to keep doing our best, even though we never think that our best is enough. But I think it's one step towards, you know, a fair and equitable society, you know, that disproportionately impacted, you know, like marginalized communities. So that, yeah, I would, I would leave it at that.
So there was a debate, I understand it, between the mayor and the council as to how to pay, how much to pay the coordinator and the analyst.
Yes.
And you guys went back and forth a little bit. And I think finally it was $35 an hour for one of them and 42 for the other. Were you satisfied with, with the result, with how the debate took place? Or was that not a major concern?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's, I would say though, that, you know, I'm like on the fence. I'm just glad that this thing, this process is moving forward. And then, you know, like we can, you know, walk on other stuff around it, you know, much later. But I would say that because I was most interested in seeing this process moving forward as swiftly as possible. And, and I think where we are, we are pretty, I think I'm, I'm satisfied. I'll put it down. Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you for asking. And I'm surprised that you knew about all this inside scoop.
Well, I, it turns out that there's this thing called the internet and it's.
Oh.
I mean, there was an article that, it was posted today. I suppose it'll appear in the journal, the hard copy tomorrow, that was very specific. It said that Councillor Lance Davis has already received seven applications for one of the jobs and one application for another. And I'm like, this is, this is to the moment almost. So yes. So then we have a specific case unfortunately that took place earlier, earlier this month with a police officer, Somerville police officer, who was charged with pepper spraying an individual who was already in custody, I guess handcuffed. And the, what happened was he was, the officer was placed on unpaid leave, right? And the mayor referred the case to the DA, I think, and there's a hearing scheduled for next month. So is your understanding of that, is, do I have it right? And then if so, how do you think, how well did the city and the police department respond to that situation? Do you think it was handled appropriately?
I mean, what, everything you've said is also something that I've also just read it, you know, like from those articles. And I would say though that it's very disturbing to see that, you know, that this is happening and, you know, somebody was supposed to represent, you know, like protect the community or like, you know, you should be able to do something like that. But I would say though that I think the city, you know, has been better under the leadership of Chief Fallon, you know, and I don't, but there's a lot more that we could do, you know. And the unions have historically, you know, been an obstacle to, you know, like the advancement of, you know, policing in terms of like how they should conduct themselves, you know. So, and I think now that we are in the process of, or looking into reviewing the city charter, you know, I think we'll be talking about most of this conversation, like how to like really have, you know, if, because the times have changed, you know, I mean, so it's changed and so.
Isn't it also, isn't it also a contractual issue? Like, I, I still don't understand how much and to what extent, if at all, body cameras are used. And I know that that, isn't that a subject of negotiation? So.
It is.
How does that fit in with what you were saying?
Uh, and, yeah, there are these level laws and, and how, you know, like the police themselves. I think accountability should be front and center of our conversation these days. Equity should be front and center, you know. So like for me personally, I would say that I have always been a proponent of body cameras, you know, and so.
Of what? I'm sorry, of what?
Of body, body cameras, you know, in policing, you know, where body camera. Because like, you know, the recent tragic event that happened, you know, if it wasn't captured on video, it would just also be another case that, you know, would just go unnoticed. So it's a, it has its merits, but having the union also being a hindrance to some of this process, we need to be able to like, you know, bring them back, structure them in terms of how we fund them. Because the only way that they can behave properly is only when we cut some of their funding, you know. And that will bring them to the table. Because if you don't even, if you're a decent person and you have a baseline for humanity in terms of your role and responsibility, why would you even be refusing or something like that, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because I think, you know, my husband is British and normally we go every summer to see his family. This year we have not been able to, obviously. But they all have cameras and they don't have guns. And it's just such a different way of doing things, I guess. So it, it's challenging if you're trying to move from one situation to another. It has to be, I guess. So I don't have a whole lot more time, but I want to ask you about how, how the city is responding to COVID. So recently Somerville was designated with a, given a red designation, which means that, my husband and I went over this three times. He is, he's Mr. Math. I needed him. But it means that there are eight new cases per day averaged over a 14-day period for every 100,000 people. That's how they got that number.
Yeah.
So in the past, we were yellow, which meant we only had four to eight new cases. Now we're a little over eight, so we're in this red supposedly higher risk situation. Do you have any reaction to that? Are you worried about that or not?
And thank you, Sarah. I'm glad that you, we moved on from that other energy, you know, like draining situation. This is also still energy intense, but somewhat, you know, like I wanted to say that this is, it's very concerning. And, you know, like my thoughts are with everyone who has recently been diagnosed, you know, and their families. Because.
Do you know, do you know anyone who's, who's been real sick or who has died from, from it?
I mean, like, who hasn't? Who hasn't? Sarah, who hasn't?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, yeah, no, I know, I know, you know, like folks, I even have even, you know, like my uncle had it, you know, but he got healed from it, you know. So it's like so many, I mean, I don't think if you just look at it like this.
I think what's so hard to understand is, you know, Somerville, the mayor's been so much more conservative in some ways, you know, slowing down the pace of reopening. And I don't know how you feel individually, and I think a lot of people have appreciated that he has taken that approach. And so for the number to go higher despite that, I mean, I don't know if it has to do with influx of college students or just the, that these things go up and down no matter what or. But I guess, I guess my question to you though is, how do you feel the city has done? If, I've asked this of Matt McLaughlin previously. If you had to rate the city's response to the COVID-19 situation on say a scale of one to 10, how well has the city handled it?
I mean, Sarah, I would say, you know, like the city and the mayor has been, I would score the city on a 10, you know, because we've been, you know, at the forefront of this, you know, pandemic. So I'm just a little bit stunned that we are in this situation because we were even the first to, you know, like institute a ban on eviction, you know, early closing, you name it. You know, so I think, you know, it is definitely something that we can all work together to get under control. You know, like just that continual wearing of mask anytime you're outside your home.
Right.
Wash your hands, keep six feet distance from people, not in your household whenever possible, you know. And then quarantine if you feel sick. But I also understand that this also is an equity issue because you need resources to quarantine, you know. And people need to know that there are testing sites available. You can get tested in Somerville for free, you know. There's a lot of information on the website, you know, if you have symptoms or you don't, go get tested, you know. So it's all about focusing also on the most vulnerable population because large number of essential workers, you know, like, it's like high-density areas where there's housing, families. It's, that's why you see people who've been, always been at the forefront, including you, you know, advocating for sick leave, you know, just so that people, you might want to stay home. But don't you need resource, you know, like if you don't have the resource, you want us to get out there, even if you know that you're not feeling well. So it's complicated, Sarah. It's a.
On that, on that specific note, complicated, I'm afraid we have to stop. On that, on that specific note, complicated, I'm afraid we have to stop. I just want to quickly put in an announcement, I don't know if you have any, but I want to ask people to vote either now or by mail or on November 3rd. And I want to thank you for, for doing this. This has been City Council Spotlight with Will Umba, have a nice day.
Thank you so much, and have a great evening yourself.